Mayor Page.
Here.
Councilmember Shabeta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Clerk. First item up is the public items. Members would love to encourage you to use this item. Time to make comments about matters that you have to bear with each other. Comments about items on the verge of agenda, we take them as each item is considered. Please note that you have five minutes. We did have a blue sign up sheet here that's completely blank. It desperately came forward now, but does anyone out there have anything they'd like to comment to the council on a public basis? I see nobody rushing to the podium, so we will close out that section of the meeting for public items. Next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be retrieved by city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items as councilmembers so request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda except for several. I consider we only have one item, one consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like to talk about it before we ask for a motion? Okay, I see no one. Where is it? I would retain a motion. Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that council approved consent agenda item number one.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Sands.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Shabeta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Clerk. The next item up is the mayor's report. I have a couple proclamations this evening that I'd like to read to the audience. The first one is National Co-Responder Week. Okay, so let me read this for us, and then I think we have a few people in the audience that might want to speak. Okay, whereas the Johnson County Mental Health Center's co-responder program was established in 2011 to embed mental health clinicians with law enforcement agencies to respond together to individuals in crisis, providing the right intervention at the right time and connecting individuals to appropriate resources. Whereas, Marion started partnering with Johnson County's co-responder program in 2017 to address the rising demand for mental health and substance abuse calls of service. And whereas, mental health and substance use challenges can lead to homelessness, prison, and emergency room visits, which are costlier for communities than early interventions and connections to behavioral health services. And whereas, today the co-responder program has twenty-one co-responder positions and fifteen partnerships with local law enforcement agencies. And whereas, Marion has hired two co-responders in partnership with northeast Johnson County cities to aid with mental health-related calls that let individuals know about programs across the metro area to help them with their needs. Now therefore, in recognition of their service to our community, I, Bob Page, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2024 as National Co-Responder Week proclaimed on this ninth day of September, 2024. Now, I know we have three individuals on. I'm going to come down in a minute and give this proclamation to someone there, and hopefully we get a photo op. But if you'd come forward and give your name and just your background, where you're working.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Murphy, and I am Deputy Division Director and Emergency Services at Johnson County Mental Health Center. That is a long way to say that I oversee our local crisis team and co-responder programs throughout the county. I am joined by Jen Melby, Co-Responder Team Leader, and Krista Walker, the Northeast Evening Co-Responder. I am honored to accept this proclamation for National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week on behalf of Johnson County Mental Health Center and our valued partners at Marion Police Department. This week, we not only recognize the critical work being done by co-responder teams across the nation, but we also celebrate the unique and powerful partnerships here in Marion. Since the inception of the Northeast Co-Responder Program in 2017, we have seen firsthand the impact that collaboration between law enforcement and mental health professionals can have on our community. Thanks to the ongoing support and funding from this council and the dedication of our police department and mental health center, we have been able to build a program that responds to the needs of our most vulnerable residents with care, compassion, and expertise. When we started in 2017, the co-responder program was still relatively new in Johnson County, an initiative driven by the belief that partnerships between police officers and mental health professionals could lead to better outcomes for individuals in crisis. And today, I'm proud to share just how far we've come. The Johnson County program started in 2011 with one co-responder and has since grown to twenty-one positions covering the entire county. Marion Police Department started with a partnership with seven nearby jurisdictions to have a shared program. Since then, Marion Police Department has been a leader in growing the program to two co-responders shared with four other jurisdictions. In our first year of the Northeast program, our co-responder only handled two calls for service in Marion. And while that's not impressive, which is part of the reason, while that, let me back up, I apologize, we know that's not impressive, which is part of what led to the split for the program. What is impressive is that last year, with the two co-responder positions, that number grew to over two hundred and thirty responses. That's more than an eleven thousand percent increase. This shows not only the growing trust in our program, but also the increasing recognition of the importance of specialized mental health support in crisis situations and the value of having more dedicated time from co-responders. Over the past seven years, we have successfully diverted individuals in crisis from the criminal justice system to appropriate mental health services. This means fewer arrests, fewer hospitalizations, and more people getting the help that they need when they need it the most. With the addition of the second co-responder, we've also expanded our outreach efforts, finding new ways to help citizens. We follow up with nearly every citizen having police contact of a behavioral health concern. That's nearly one thousand follow-ups since 2017 for the city of Marion alone, and over three thousand for the entire Northeast program. Having the privilege of working so closely with law enforcement, we have learned additional ways to support our community by expanding our follow-up efforts to include substance abuse, homelessness, loved ones who have lost someone to suicide, and those who have experienced a traumatic incident and domestic violence calls. Krista has taken on the majority of these follow-ups, doing sixty-five domestic violence follow-ups alone. These types of follow-up efforts have shown to be very impactful, not only to our citizens, but also to the officers we partner with, giving them another tool to provide citizens when they are in difficult calls. And before they cue the Oscar music for me to pull me from the podium, I'd like to read two quick citizen compliments. The first was an email sent to Chief McLaughlin. "I just wanted to send a note about the officers and co-responder. They were all at my house this week when my spouse was having some mental health issues that scared me. They were so respectful and helpful that I truly appreciated it so much. I am so glad I knew that we had a mental health co-responder, and I'm glad that you keep advocating for us to approve that position in the budget each year. It's truly been impactful to me personally this week, and I'm so glad it exists." And this one is a personal favorite that I replay, and it's a voicemail that a resident left on one of the co-responder's phones. He said, "I just wanted to tell you, I was just wanting to tell you thank you. Thank you for coming by yesterday. I know you probably help a lot of people, but you absolutely saved me yesterday. You got me out of my head. I was also wanting to say you saved a guy yesterday. Thank you so much." The co-responders and officers are the ones in the field that get to help these individuals every day, but it is because of your support and Chief McLaughlin's leadership that this program continues to thrive. These stories help me remember that this program doesn't just change lives, but it saves them. Thank you.
Okay. I will. There's a question up on the floor. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for being on both sides.
Thank you.
They are truly impacting the lives ahead of our citizens. Okay, the next proclamation I have is for Hispanic Heritage Week, and I'll read it this time. Hispanic Heritage Week started in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover thirty days starting September fifteenth to observe Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the achievements and contributions of Hispanic Americans and creates awareness of the significant strides of Hispanics and the economic and social growth of the United States. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community, and reflects an array of distinct cultures. And whereas, the city of Marion is welcoming an inclusive community dedicated to improving the quality of life for those we serve. Now therefore, I, Bob Page, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteen, 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month proclaimed on the ninth day of September, 2024. I don't think we have anyone in the audience. It's getting bad, but we will. But anyways, just give a little people. Okay, well, let's see. Moving on. It looks like the next item up is the mayor's report. I always like to take a, excuse me, a little time to talk about things that I and the rest of our council members have done during the previous two weeks. I attended the Johnson County Criminal Advisory Committee meeting, and Beth Serval, if you might remember, was instrumental in the formation of this committee. She's gone into her recent past. She will be remembered, but not forgotten. I and Councilmember Hans and Silvers and numerous of staff met at City Auditorium at Chief's pick to show our support of the team. Team Marion joins Team Chief in moving forward. Councilmember Hans and I met this week over tonight's agenda. Councilmember Silvers and Hans attended the Timber Arts Gallery opening, on the original night of the opening. Councilmember Silvers attended the Marion Greenwich Board meeting, and Councilmember Silvers attended the planning commission meeting. He was very busy this last two weeks. I met with Ms. Guard. We sent some papers showing county support. I made an appearance at the Old Alitha Settlers Day. Unfortunately, I had to restore all my calendar. Wasn't there on the day that was given recognition of the bears. My bad. But I did go. And I did meet some Marion residents that were down there as well, too, so I did get to talk to several people when I was there. I made an appearance. I mean, I attended the Oval Park Fire Department Retirement Fire Butter Monthly Practice, gave them an update of all the great things that are happening in Marion. They always like to know what we're doing. And I attended the Johnson County Colonists Meeting, Monthly Meeting, gave them an update. Wanted to invite all in attendance to the upcoming Turkey Creek Car and Motorcycle Show this coming Saturday. Last year, we had over three hundred entries, and the show was ten AM to four PM, but cars start entering down at about seven-thirty in the morning. See Ms. Pennick. Do we still need volunteers? I assume we need two more volunteers. I said, see, at least two of you out there. So if you haven't volunteered yet, please see her before you leave this evening. And then, I think it was the last two weeks, I did have my calendar. Did we have the blood drive this last, during these last two weeks? And I have to report that the police department did win in the battle of the blood drive, between the fire and the police. I mean, we, I think there might have been some hanging little red chips that didn't get put into the red thing that just reasons it was so lopsided. But regardless, you know, we appreciate the fact that, and that was, did, which captain?
Captain Wyler.
Wyler, yeah. Yeah, he was, give him our thanks for bringing that on. Anybody from the fire department that also sent an evidence pass on our, our thanks. Because if you have to give a blood, please go out and give it. It's one way that everybody in this room has a chance to save a life. So we do look forward to that as being an ongoing event. So I give my blood. I can, I can, I'm gonna get two units next year.
Can you give three?
Three. Might be a little. I'm there for, I'm there for the, for the cookies. Okay, then, I think the only other thing I have to, to announce is that we have a vacancy and work for, for council position. So Mr. Neil has submitted his letter of reservation to me with respect to immediately. And then we have a process, as we've done numerous times in the past, of how to fill that vacancy for the remainder of his term. I'll turn it over to Mr. Eagle just to kind of cover that information.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do have a process for filling council vacancies. It's spelled out in Marion City Code Section two point twenty-seven. This, we would use this to fill the vacancy. That particular term is set to expire December twenty-fifth, December twenty-twenty-five, so it would be to fill the remainder of that term. In brief, essentially what we'll do is this is considered the notice of vacancy. We will, starting tomorrow, post vacancy and solicit letters of intent and resumes from interested parties in Ward Four. We keep that open for thirty days, so they will, so interested parties will have until four-thirty on October ninth. We will then, on October twenty-eighth, the council will hold an election in public session as part of the council, as part of the council meeting, where we will use the process spelled out in Section two twenty-seven to narrow the number of interested applicants down to one. That one chosen applicant will be immediately sworn in as our new Ward Four council member. In the past, at least the last three times that we've done this dating back to 2017, we've had three questions that we share with all of the applicants that are really the interview questions in addition to their letter of interest that they submit, their resume, that the mayor traditionally has conducted the interview. Those questions are, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years? What skills or talents would you bring to the city council? Do you have any closing comment for the city council to consider? Those are the three questions, again, that we've shared the last three times. You have a memo in front of you. There's a memo that's out on the desk that has all of this information in it all. So we will, again, include all of this on our website and our media, our media channels to make sure that all interested Ward Four residents that would like to throw their name in the hat for council member can get the opportunity to. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process. Or we've got the city attorney also aware of the process. Questions for Mr. Eagle and Mr. Duke?
Okay, I assume we're happy with the three questions we've always used in the past. If somebody could work. Okay, those are the Smiths, I guess, that will.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I want to remind everyone that the Go Green Environmental Fair is this Saturday at Powell Community Center from eight to noon. You're welcome.
Anything else? And then I've got to ask on council items. Did any other council members attend the, I missed. Oh, we, that's right. You were there. We had another blood drive done. Thank you, Miss Ryder. So that was good. Okay, well, I see nothing else. I think we're ready, we want to, to council items. First item up on this is Considered Resolution, Paying Authorized Officers for the City of Marion's Municipal Investment Pool. I'll give Ms. Guard to the podium.
Good evening. We make our bond payments to the state of Kansas, and in between those bond payments, we invest in what's considered a public investment fund, the Municipal Investment Pool. It's run by the state of Kansas. As part of that, we have to have authorized users on that account, and so we are requesting to update those users tonight with the resolution in your packet. If you have to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Guard? Okay, see, questions? I would entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution naming Assistant City Administrator Caitlin Guard and Accountant Michael Larkin as the authorized officers of the city of Marion's Municipal Investment Pool.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Go ahead, in charge.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor Clerk. Next item up is a purely change order with Central Industrial Sheet Metal Works, where we work with exterior sunshade.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In April twenty twenty-two, council approved a contract with Peritrade Innovations for Phase One exterior City Hall improvements. This included installation of the shit sunshade on the exterior of City Hall. After it was installed, staff observed that it was not completed to city standards, and the bolts for the sunshade were not drilled all the way into the wall. And so we obtained a bid from Central Industrial Sheet Metal Works, which was approved by council on February twenty twenty-four in the amount of fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to rework the sunshade, assuming minimal fabrication of parts to connect the sunshade to the exterior. After removing the sunshade and bricks, it was determined that it was not installed for plan, and an engineer was retained to redo the design. A new bracket was designed, fabricated, and load testing was performed to make sure the brackets would adequately support the sunshade. The sunshade is now secured to the brick and the mortar behind it, and the project is completed. However, due to this additional work, a change order in the amount of twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand and seventy dollars was incurred. This includes additional costs for engineering, masonry, equipment, rental materials, and additional labor as detailed in your packet. We've inspected the work, and we believe it's been satisfactorily completed. We do have a performance and maintenance bond, which will cover a year just in case anything comes up throughout that year, but we believe it's been adequately installed. If the items approved, the total cost for this project will exceed the budget by twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and will require CIP contingency funds to complete. This includes this change order plus the eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, which was previously approved by council. Assuming the change order is approved, the city attorney, sorry, the city attorney is now ready to negotiate and, if necessary, litigate the pending city, city claim of peritrade to resolve this issue. I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Any questions for, okay. Questions? It looks nice.
It does.
And I assume we have no water coming in anymore.
Right.
So hopefully we're done.
Should be good. It looks good. They did a great job, and we're happy that it's over and finally complete.
Actually, good. Why would you entertain a motion for this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve of the change order with Central Industrial Sheet Metal Works Incorporated for rework of the exterior sunshade at City Hall in the amount of twenty-one thousand and seventy dollars.
Yeah, and what should I have a second? Go ahead. Let me, Mr. Silvers, please. You guys were almost tied there already. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that. Who, where are questions second up here?
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye, and I'm delighted to see it come to a close.
Yeah, so did, can we climb on that thing?
You can try, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Should not do that. But at least I make something up. I think you have an approval and agreement with Johnson County.
Johnson County's Stormwater Management Program provides funding for repair and replacement of deteriorated stormwater pipe and inlets as part of their system management program, and assets that have been assigned an observed risk of three point two or higher are eligible for reimbursement, with five being failed and one being new. In 2022, staff submitted an application to Johnson County for funding for replacement of stormwater infrastructure for the fiftieth and Neyland Drainage Project, and that's what this agreement is for that project, even though it has a different name. The total estimated cost for eligible assets is two hundred and thirty-four thousand and five hundred and twenty-six dollars, and Johnson County will reimburse the city fifty percent of that cost. Construction for this project is currently underway, and staff will submit payment requests to Johnson County following approval of this agreement.
Any questions for her to come in? Questions? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I move that the council approve an agreement with Johnson County for funding for the twenty twenty-three Marion Pipe Repair Stormwater System Renewal Project.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Go ahead, in charge.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
We have a book, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
I'll quote. Next item up is Considerably or Professional Services Agreement. I see you are not left podium, so I'll throw you.
So as you know, the Shawnee Mission Parkway Corridor and Interchange is a very integral part of our city. Marion residents use it most every day, and a lot of visitors drive through the corridor to go to the Plaza and Western Shawnee, so it's really important to us. This preliminary engineering study would take a look at a preferred alternate for the interchange and looking at the corridor as well. Some of the issues that you already know about is that there's no pedestrian access across I thirty-five, which is a council goal. When you get off of I thirty-five on the northbound off-ramp and get Gobi's Boundless Shawnee Mission Parkway, there's emerging issue there. Safety, the crash rate is higher than the state average, and then we want to look at capacity, too, as we develop and, you know, as other adjacent cities develop as well. So that would be the main function of this project, would be looking at a preferred alternative for this interchange, but we also want to look at the corridor wall over here. We want to look at access management, safety. You know, there's a lot of barriers on the west side with the flood plain and the front of drugs, but taking a look, is there any high-level concepts that we can look at as we improve this corridor over time, as well as anti-oc, you know, are there any right turn lanes we should put in? Should we extend the three lanes farther east? So there's a lot of things that we'd be looking at as part of this preliminary engineering study. As part of an interchange, we are required to go the closest interchange to the north and to the south and collect traffic data. So that's why Johnson Drive and Sixty-seventh are part of this evaluation. We'll be looking at high-level concepts for Johnson Drive, but we have a lot of barriers with the railroad and close proximity to turn lanes and interchange. The Sixty-seventh, we've been talking about, wondering if a roundabout would work on the east side of the interchange with the off-ramp and the frontage road. So while they're looking at data, at traffic data there, we asked them to go ahead and look at, you know, that concept and a high-level concept of that would work. So maybe in the future, a future CIP, we could look at those improvements. This study will be funded three hundred thousand by TIF funds and three hundred thousand by our capital improvement funds. And the idea is that if we invest our own money, there's a lot of federal funding out there. We're hoping that if we have a preferred solution, then we can apply for federal funds and take advantage of that. And as, as we know, this interchange is KDOT right now, so we'd like to work together with them, and hopefully there's some federal funding that we can work together on. They have a lot of other needs, so hopefully if we show that we're interested in investing our money, they're willing to come to the table and set ourselves up for success. We are recommending that H and T, H and T V Corporation be the designer for this project. They have a lot of experience. They recently, I know that they worked on numerous interchanges, but they recently completed a hundred and nineteenth and I thirty-five, a hundred and fifty-first and now on I thirty-five, and they're working on Shawnee Mission or Santa Fe and I thirty-five right now, so they know how to work with KDOT and what to do to move these projects forward. So we're really looking forward to working with them. Public engagement will be part of the project. We'll have an open house, city council work sessions, and we're recommending a committee composed of some council members and residents. We'll also have KDOT and our neighboring cities. We'll ask them to attend as well. And I know that the administrator is working with the mayor right now, identifying some of the members of that committee, so we can get started on that. The study is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand and seventy-eight dollars, and if approved tonight, it will be completed in October twenty twenty-five. So it's a big process, a big project, but we're real excited to get going.
Any questions for her to come in?
I don't really have a question, but I found the map very helpful to understand why, why and where we're going. So anytime you have opportunity to use that, to communicate with us or the public, I would really recommend using that. Thank you for the input.
Good. I support this, so don't take my comments negatively, but what's promptiness to do this?
Well, you know, I've been talking to city administrator about capital improvements, and one of the goals is pedestrian access, so we started, you know, talking about this interchange. And with all the development going on along Shawnee Mission Parkway, we thought it would be a good opportunity to go ahead and, you know, like I said, look at a solution, and then... Um, and then, you know, we probably won't do any improvements in interchange unless we get federal funding. So setting us outs, ourselves up for that.
Okay, thank you. You guys have questions? Remember to comment on this?
This is just a comment and um, you probably already know this, but when um, Jacob and I went to NLC in DC, um, they have open hours with all the federal agencies. Um, and they will essentially give you a direct pathway to all of the free money that they have when you sit down and talk with them. Um, so I'm not sure if they'll have the same kind of open hours in November in Tampa when we go. But um, when we discussed things with them, they were like, here's all of our free money available. Um, and I say, did the same kind of thing and it, I mean, Department of Transportation was there, like everybody was there. Um, so that could be a way to get information out there in March, since you're looking at twenty twenty-five timeline. But I don't think that fits with the timeline or not.
No, I mean, we, we're always looking. Um, what's nice about this is a lot of times you can't apply for funding until you have a solution. So this will give us enough information to apply, but that's great. Then where we can do the better. Yep.
Uh, see no other questions?
You have a public comment, but I also have another comment. Well, he's.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're, we're in notary.
We're in notary. I got all night. I just got one comment, which you can.
I'm, I'm very excited that Sixty-seventh Street is included and does that. I've, I've thought I was gonna die there several times. I drive it every day.
I know, you do.
And I think even the corridor here at Johnson Drive too, like I drive it every day.
You're making a lot of people feel better.
There you go.
Any other questions for you?
I just want to mention that Stacy was also at NLC and I didn't mean to leave her out.
I guess representing that, sort of representing us. Uh, go ahead, sir.
Could I speak?
Yes, please come forward.
I'm rich, Franklin, and I live in Warburg too.
You need to.
Please, please come forward. I got your name out.
You can hear him. You don't need that. Yeah, we have procedures.
I worked for KDOT for fourteen years. I worked for the city of Shawnee for twenty years. I live across the street from Ms. Ryder. KDOT will give you pretty much anything they got. Problem is, the sixty-nine project is killing them. I worked at the shop at a hundred and sixty-seven, three and sixty-nine highway. It's gonna be gone. KDOT doesn't have the money. That's why it's a toll. They're making a toll road out, three years to get it built. The problem with Sixty-seventh Street, like you say, you got the Frank Rhodes, you got the car dealerships. All the wrecks come, they come off the ramp. There's not enough room to get everybody on them. Johnson Drive, you've all been here longer than I have. The biggest problem with Johnson Drive, the train tracks. And the railroad is not gonna let you mess with it. You guys know that. And it's like I said, drug penetration, they're, they're hurt for everything. And like I said, I've been through it, brother, through the specials for forty years. And the guy can't even get raises because all the money's gone. And that's the biggest problem. And like I said, this lady was right. You can get money from the feds. You can get a lot of it. And that's what KDOT had to do. They wanted KDOT to fund the sixty-nine project. KDOT says, we ain't got the money. You wanna do it, fine, you go right ahead over the park, which they did. They're making a toll road. And it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be beautiful when they get it all done. It's gonna take a long time to get it done. And I just want to be, let you know, I seen it from both sides. I plowed and for fourteen years, I lived up and down Fort Thirty-Five. I've seen it all road. When I first started with KDOT, there was a dry as a bean on sixty-nine, gets all changed. And like I said, it's very, very expensive. So you want to watch your budgets and like I said, hit the feds hard. There's a lot of money out there. But it's gonna take a lot to get through that, what you guys need to do. You've got car dealerships on both sides of the road. You've got no room to put a whole lot because of the railroad tracks. That's where it hurts the city. And like I said, the biggest concern to me as a citizen, I grew up in Shawnee, uh, block, there were about three blocks from where I live now, was the railroad tracks. Because it delays fire response, everything else. And if me as a citizen of Marion, if I had the money, I'd give you the money to put a bridge over the top of railroad tracks. And I'd just, just uh, you know, guy that's worked in that gun. I've heard this stuff before. I've heard through my supervisors, the director from KDOT knows what I like though. And you think I have the money to help nobody right now? And it gets worse, that's the problem, so. I just want to say that. I hope that we can get it done. Like I said, Sixty-seventh Street hits, getting onto the ramp. Let me tell you this, when you go, you're going northbound. You get off, to get off on Sixty-seventh Street? Don't do it, they dump drug to assault. So you don't have enough room. I slid through that intersection a hundred times. That's where I had to turn around, but they're back to South New Orleans, south of that sixty-nine. But there's just not enough room. So a lot of things that have to be done to get all of that, give you the room you guys are gonna need. But they've already gone to, it's on the six, they'll go to eight lanes eventually. You know, give them another ten years, you're gonna have eight, ten lanes, just like they do in California. So that's all I want to say.
I appreciate your time. Uh, could you do, uh, Ms. Pennick, your address, your name, sir?
Five nine zero six Perry Avenue. And I'm gonna talk to that and then man before some progress. I have one of your officers.
And your name, sir?
My name's Rick Stripling, S T R I P L I N G.
Thank you, Mr. Stripling. And we appreciate your.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm a volunteer to help. You want something, buddy?
Take that consideration, put that committee.
Seriously. He knows the stuff.
I'm gonna talk about manholes at the next meeting. Amy knows what I'm talking about.
Well, if there are, well, the question, I would uh, entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the professional services agreement with H and T B Corporation to provide preliminary engineering services for the Shawnee Mission Parkway and the I thirty-five interchange in the amount of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand seventy-eight dollars.
Okay, motion. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Shabeta.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, then clerk, we have a motion second.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Clerk. Looks like our next item up is uh, Staff and Commissioner Hands on a September CFP update.
Since you've already heard me talk a lot tonight, I won't um, give any presentations on this. Uh, the information's in your packet, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the CIP.
Any questions for Kirk to come here on CFP? Go ahead and say it.
It feels like the um, Seventy-Fifth Street Bridge, we kind of get the same report every time. I know it's not, I know it's a little hard, but do you feel like there's movement happening?
So um, they actually submitted, um, they sent out qualifications. They had two contractors and they just sent us that, their qualification statement last week. And we had until Friday to give them comments. So at that time, they should be selecting somebody, so we're moving forward slowly. Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question. How is the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? On Knox and Hawker, all of the sediment that went into the backyards on the east side, has that all been cleared? And is everything?
So there are two residents that immediately contacted us and we cleared, cleared their area out. And they seem to be real pleased about that. We have one more resident. Um, it's on, he's on the dead end and he, he notified us later. But I sent him an access agreement, um, and he hasn't gotten, he's called for questions, but he hasn't signed it. So I will get in there as soon as I get that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
That's it? Thank you.
Okay, uh, informational items is uh, part of our recreation advisory board minutes. We're on packet. We have any questions for, to smothers? Is uh, I see anybody? We're just gonna have to come forward here. Uh, I'm David O'Anan.
Back Wednesday.
Back Wednesday. Well, that'll overdo it down there. Keep our under control. Um, well, I don't know if we have a second session this evening, so is uh, what, do you have anything, uh, Ms. Eagle? Don't I just echo your uh, invitation, Kirk, woman, to attend the Turkey Creek Car Show on Saturday? It's gonna be a fantastic day, other than I'm not answering questions, councilors. Any questions for Ms. Eagle?
Shawnee had deer last weekend.
Questions for Ms. Eagle? Well, before we call for adjournment, I will just like to say that I apologize for missing last meeting. Uh, I thank you, uh, Ms. Hands for uh, filling in for me and for Mr. Sanders for taking the council president role. I was not on vacation, I was working. But anyway, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hands?
I move we adjourn.
Okay, we have a second? Ms. Sanders?
Mr. Mayor, second?
I'm clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Fun meeting? Shorter than most of them, that's for sure. It's shorter than most of them.